Talking football. Again.
Hi, I'm well, you?
So when you make it, let me know. It's pretty easy. Use chicken thighs. Use thighs and not chicken breast.
Good.
It's kind of normal, unfortunately.
Stayed next to the sun.
Nice to meet you. Come on up. Before I get ready.
I was so confused about what was.
Been there, underste. It's 5:59, so. Oh, there we go, it's six o'clock. All right, everybody, I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular DeKalb City Council meeting of September 23rd to order. Roll call, please.
Zasada.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Eight i.
All right, then moving on to Agenda Item B, the Pledge of Allegiance. Captain Hyde, will you lead us in the pledge today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gentry. You have a wonderful night.
Going on vacation.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, approval of the agenda. We take a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Walker. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Zasada.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight i.
All right, the agenda has been approved. Moving on to D, Presentations. I've got a couple here that are just exciting. So I'm gonna say a few words. City Manager, you're welcome to chime in if you want, but we're here today to recognize two people that have served on our Airport Advisory Board for a decade, two decades, three decades, long time. And early on, when I was mayor, when I first became mayor, I went to many of the Airport Advisory Boards as I was getting to know all the community enhancement commissions that we had, environmental commissions, and all the commissions in general. And it was always really refreshing to go to the Airport Advisory Board. It was well-run, and then the participation by all members was just fantastic. They gave a lot of incredible feedback to our previous airport manager, our existing one, and then also Andy Rye, who is a component of overseeing the airport as well. And it's commission members like these two that are just incredibly valuable, and it's just great to know that people will step up, they'll serve, not one year, two years, but at times multiple decades. And in this case, what's really important about that is, the airport is kind of a niche commission. You really gotta know aviation, you gotta understand it, you gotta realize what's important, you gotta know the history of where the airport was, where it is, and where it's going. And these two have been stable there, making sure that that institutional knowledge carries forward. In particular, when we have a great US Congresswoman like Congresswoman Underwood, who comes around asking, hey, what can we do? And to be able to have her have a clear understanding of the needs of the airport results in, I think it was $2.5 million that she brought to the airport. And the Airport Advisory Board was a component of figuring out, what do we need to do with that money? Where does it need to go? So what we're here today to is just pause and recognize two people that have spent, well, some of us might say a lifetime, some of us half a lifetime, but a lifetime of service in the airport, on our Airport Advisory Board. And I just wanna say thank you from my office, and I'm sure on behalf of council, we really do appreciate all the time and energy that you two continue to put into the Airport Advisory Board. City Manager, I don't know if you have any comments at all?
Yes, just a few. You hit the right notes. Sixty-six combined years of service these two gentlemen have. They have, from the beginning, both of them kind of been on the same, singing from the same hymnal. They realize that service specifically at the airport means service to the flyers, many of whom are just amateur flyers that come in and have invested in one of our hangars and come out on weekends, or however often they do, and they do it with their families. And then also, we have corporate flyers now, more than we've ever had before, that come in and use our airport as needed, and that helps the overall general economy. Service to the pilots is important, service to the community is important, too. There's never a month that goes by that the airport, because it's sort of unique and it's different, attracts people to come and visit, and I don't know how many times it's given away free hot dogs and coffee, or a pop, or whatever, just to encourage people to come. And their leadership, their prudence in how the airport fund is spent every year has been remarkable, and so I'm very grateful to both of them.
And on a personal note, just the way the airport is, how it operates, the instructors that we have out there as well, through Fly America. My daughter, her senior year, took lessons out there and became a pilot, her senior year of high school, and that triggered her going to Georgia Tech in the Aerospace Engineering Program. So the ripples of what you do and how you make sure our airport is as world-class as the city of DeKalb can make that, it inspires the next generation of pilots, the next generation of aerospace engineers, and it's just really cool. So even personally, I wanna say thank you for all of your involvement, because it really made a huge difference to my daughter and the trajectory that she's on now, going forward as an adult. So we have two certificates of recognition, and actually, I would be really remiss, too, not to recognize Alderman Verbic, who speaks incredibly highly of the board, but also you two as well, which is one of the reasons why we're taking pause today to recognize you all. And Alderman Verbic is our Airport Advisory Board liaison. He's been dedicated to it, I think you show up all the time, always has feedback on what's going on out there. So it's a great example of council being dedicated to one of our commissions, working with our commissioners, and when that happens, usually great things happen, which has been happening at the Airport Advisory Board. So we have two recognitions here, one to Bob Owens, and then also to Jim Rhodes. I would love, if you two don't mind, if you would come up, and council, we'd like to come down and get a nice photo op with you two, if that's okay? All right. Thank you, sir. Where do you want to stand? You guys wanna come here? Bob, there you go. You guys wanna be in the middle? Alderman Verbic, you wanna get on the other side of those and share the... He said this way. Face that guy right there.
Yeah.
Bob, you wanna open it up so we can get to see it? And get a little closer, like you, like this. All right, all that? Does that look good? And as I tell, and as I tell everyone, family members included, don't feel obligated to stay. We've got water main breaks, we're gonna be talking about, some different ordinances, so you're more than welcome. It's not insulting at all, we encourage you to leave, go enjoy the rest of your evening, you serve the community enough as it is, so. No, we're not gonna talk about the airport. Yeah, have a great night. Thank you, guys. One more round of applause as they leave. Mine, thank you. Well, nope, they're not. No one else?
Yeah, mine.
Might be them, yeah. I'll hold tight.
Good catch.
Someone would've been very upset tonight. Good catch. All right, then I've also got a proclamation here. It's for Fire Prevention Week, October 6th through the 12th, 2024. Whereas the city of DeKalb is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fires is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires killed more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 360,000 home fires. Whereas roughly, three out of five fire deaths happen in homes with either no smoke alarms or with no working smoke alarms. Whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half. And whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of a fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas residents should make sure their smoke alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas residents should test smoke alarms at least once a month. Whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, DeKalb's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You, serves to remind us of the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. Therefore, I, Coen Barnes, Mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim October 6th through the 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week through DeKalb, throughout DeKalb, and urge all DeKalb residents to make sure their homes have working smoke alarms, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of DeKalb's fire and emergency services. Can I have a round of applause for our fire department? Do you have anyone here to receive it, or, well then, why don't you come up, and we'll all gather around for another photo op? All right, council. All right, and then moving on to Agenda Item E, Public Participation. We have one, Mark Charvat. And as a reminder, you have three minutes, sir.
I filed a Freedom of Information Act request in reference to the barbershop booze ordinance that you're gonna be considering later on. At the last meeting, you might recall, our mayor stated to the public, the media, and the council, that he received communications, lots of communications, from barbershop owners and salon owners, asking that alcohol sales be permitted. Well, that Freedom of Information Act actually asked for that exact information, and you wanna know how many records it turned up? From salon owners, barber shops? Zero. No communications via email, text, voicemail. The only thing I received was this redacted information of communication strictly between the mayor and council. Nothing. Why can our mayor not tell the truth? None of this council even bothered to ask the mayor to respond and tell us who these other owners were. Look, nothing, nothing. Now, I'm not particularly against this ordinance, per se. It has to do with fairness, as I mentioned at the last meeting. Gas station owners have asked, I know at least three have asked to have alcohol sales, I know that the laundromat at the south end of town also asked for this, they were denied. What's fair is fair, we need to be fair to all of our businesses in town. Now, what's also interesting is, there is a website from the United States government that shows that 283, this is the number they provide, barber shops and beauty salons in DeKalb applied and received PPP loans in the amount of over $20,000 each. I sent each of the aldermen the attachment of this. So this begs the question, if DeKalb has a minimum of 283 barber shops and beauty salons, how will DeKalb officials be able to police all of these if they have liquor? That's a question for the police chief. Now, I know there's not 283 salons, but there were 283 that did apply for these loans, and many of them got it. So the question is, how many of these are located near schools? Looking at the information I sent council, there are alleged barber shops on College Avenue, Hillcrest, Ridge, Greenbrier. Don't we have a new school going up in that area? I think we do. So let's keep this in mind. We need to be honest with the public, and again, I don't believe that anybody actually communicated, at least from FOIA, if the cities, they delayed this FOIA as much as they could. It came in at 5:00 today, just in the nick of time, as permitted under law, hoping that I would not see this before this council meeting. That's all.
For all of you at home, it's always great to be called a liar when you're at the city council. I guess I should start wearing a body cam now, so every conversation I'm a part of with every resident and every citizen gets recorded, so it can be FOIA. I'm gonna be happy to share some salons locally that have actually asked for it, once we get to that agenda item. So yeah, so we'll just continue on from there. Agenda Item F, Appointments. Number one, appointing interim DeKalb County Administrator Derek Highland to the Airport Advisory Board for the completion of a four-year term through December 31st, 2027. Can I have a motion to accept this appointment? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Larson. The reason for this is Brian Gregory stepped down as the county administrator, and Derek is the acting county administrator at this point, and we always have that seat on the Airport Advisory Board, as Alderman Verbic knows. All right, any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Zasada.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight i.
All right, the appointment of Derek Highland has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item G, Consent Agenda. Number one, minutes of the special city council member, city council and finance advisory committee meeting of August 19th, 2024. Number two, minutes of the regular city council meeting of September 9th, 2024. Number three, accounts payable and payroll through September 23rd, 2024, in the amount of $3,515,752.63. And then number four, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, August 2024. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Powell. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Upstein.
Howell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Zasada.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven i.
Consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item H, Public Hearings, we have none. Agenda Item I, Considerations. Number one, consideration of a community economic development implementation grant from the DeKalb County Community Foundation. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Smith. City Manager, and I know we have representatives of Opportunity DeKalb here as well.
We do.
Looks like, yep, and the Kalb County Community Foundation, so.
Yes, we do. And they're available to answer any questions you may have. I'll do my best to set this up in the background, you can follow the story in an abbreviated way. As you know, our DeKalb County Community Foundation, which has existed since 1993, has been the rock in terms of many of our not-for-profits in our county, throughout our county, and that includes, of course, the city of DeKalb. In terms of supporting quality of life, a social net that is a rival to any county in the state. And along the way, the boards, which consist of volunteers from different parts of the county, geographically, and from different walks of life within the county, annually look at the resources that they accrue, private philanthropic resources, that they would like to disperse to needed agencies around the county. And back in 2016, a little different time, some of our county communities still trying to climb out of the backend, I guess you'd say, of the housing crisis in 2008 to 2010, and DeKalb was one of those. Came up with a total of $300,000, they wanted to make an impact, the Board of DCCF, and gave every community in the county, in DeKalb County, $20,000 grants to help create, if they had economic development plans to refine them, if they didn't, to help them maybe, in some cases, hire a consultant and help and so forth, or just work with their colleagues around the county. It was very successful. The city of DeKalb used its $20,000, I think, in a constructive way, and the details are in your background. In 2021, the foundation launched Phase Two of their grant program, and that ends at the end of this year, in 2024. Another $300,000 was allocated, and in this case, it was to fund, generally speaking, implementation projects that grew out of those economic development plans. And the city of DeKalb has not used its $20,000 yet. Our focus, as you well know, as well as anybody in the room, has, in terms of social impact and economic impact, has been the Antiglen North neighborhood. And in 2021, things were much in flux, we were on the verge of tearing down Hunter Hillcrest, and there were a lot of things, but the plan for what to do with the property and how to market and so forth, were still a matter of conversation. Here we are several years later, and we're approaching the deadline, and we have a very viable use for that money. Back in, at the end of last year, as you know, the council was given a proposal, which the council unanimously approved, to support the Opportunity DeKalb Board, which was aligning with the, was creating the Project Launchpad, which was to help persons, social entrepreneurs, I guess you would say generally, who, persons who had something that they wanted to do, and through their own initiative, they wanted to see if they could create a business that would have life and vitality and serve the residents of the neighborhood. And with that in mind, we allocated $125,000 back in November, late November of last year. The program has launched its first participants have gone through the Rising Tide Capital program, which is a 12-week course, and details of that are also in your background. So what I would propose, and what Opportunity DeKalb and Chad Glover, who's here, the executive director of Opportunity DeKalb, would agree, is to allocate that remaining $20,000 allocation from the community foundation to help with the implementation, further implementation of that program, specifically, the purposes that have been encompassed by Project Launchpad, which, as I mentioned, are now being realized. This would be another shot in the arm to make sure that it is successful this year and next year and in the years to come. So I give this to you with our staff recommendation, and if you are so inclined, we hope you will support it as well.
That was a wonderful summary. We have Dan Templin from the DeKalb County Community Foundation here, we also have Chad Glover from Opportunity DeKalb. If he missed something and you would like to address, happy to, okay, thought it was a pretty good summary. Council, questions or comments on this? Yes, Alderman Zasada.
So I was excited to see in the background that you have begun with a group. Can you tell us a little bit about that group, how far along they are, and how that's going?
You have to come up to the mic, Chad.
Thank you very much for the question. So we did launch what we're calling the Breakthrough Community Business Academy this summer. The first cohort started just earlier this month. So we had over 30 local residents that expressed interest in the academy. 10 ended up enrolling, and you might ask, why the difference between 30-plus and 10 in the enrollment? That had a lot to do with two factors. First factor was, some people who expressed interest were not quite ready yet for the academy. In order to be successful in the academy, you have to have an existing business or a clear business idea. So there were a number of residents that weren't quite there yet, but our answer is not no, it's not yet. So what we're committed doing is working with those people to have them be involved in future cohorts. We also had a number of people that just couldn't make the Saturday session, so we had to pick the day of the week and the time of the day. This fall, we picked Saturday mornings, and there were some people that just with different life commitments couldn't make Saturday morning work. So we're already talking about, you know, maybe in the spring, we'll offer it on a weeknight to accommodate those additional schedules. I should say, tonight here with me is Donita Sims, who's our Director of Programming and Community Development, and Donita deserves a tremendous amount of credit.
Absolutely.
Donita was involved in recruiting the cohort and is also serving as the instructor. She went through training all summer with our national partner, Rising Tide Capital, to be prepared to deliver. And I've been at the orientation in the first two sessions, and the excitement in the room from the community members that are participating is really awesome, and Donita is just doing a phenomenal job. So we're off to a great start, we're really excited, we know based on the interest that we can sustain this in the future. And the city's leadership has been really critical in supporting us, where we know that we'll be very competitive for state and federal grants and private foundation philanthropy. But one of the things that those grantmakers look at is, what kind of sustained local financial support do you have before they're willing to issue those funds? So we believe strongly in the future, we'll be successful in getting grants. We've also been in active conversations with a number of local banks through their commitments through the Community Reinvestment Act. We just recently received a $10,000 grant from Old National Banks Foundation. We're starting to get a lot of interest from local donors. We had a number that contributed and give to Kalb County last spring. But a lot of people that have been successful in business around the community really see the impact that this could make, so we're actually starting to get some people from the community reach out to us unsolicited, saying, can you tell me more about this? And I might like to get involved either financially, as a mentor, or some other way to contribute. So we're really, really excited, and again, grateful for the city's support and leadership on this.
Yes.
So I realize it's so early on, but do you have an idea at this point of like what it costs you per person to get them through the program?
Yes, that's another great question. So Rising Tide, you know, they've been doing this across the country for 20 years. Where DeKalb is the 18th community in the country to be a partner of Rising Tide, most of the other communities are in large urban centers like Chicago, Houston, Charlotte, places like that. So Rising Tide's estimate, and sort of the marketplace value of the experience that people are getting, is about $3,000 experience that they're getting. So one of the most important things for us as an organization was to make this accessible to people in our community. So one way we're doing that is... So one way we're doing that is we're committed that at least 75% of each cohort will be individuals from low to moderate income backgrounds in terms of what our local definition is of that. So we've had a lot of conversation about what, if any, fee we would charge, and there's different models out there, so to give you a sense. So we wanted to make this, again, as accessible as possible. So we charged a one-time $50 fee for people to participate, and that $50 will go toward putting on a graduation ceremony at the end of the cohort. So again, without the financial support we've had from the city, local banks, local donors, that wouldn't be possible. So in a sense, one way that you could look at the funding is to provide access to this opportunity for people who otherwise probably wouldn't be able to afford it.
One last question. Sorry, I lost it. I'm like, where was it? So, oh, what do you feel like your max capacity is per cohort?
Yeah, so we can accommodate 20 people in each cohort. It's like, you know, kind of when you're putting together a class, you sort of have to figure out what's the class size you're going to accommodate. Again, we've really leaned on Rising Tide's experience, so 20 is the most we could have in a cohort. If we got more than 20, we'd have to open up a second cohort, and we'd have to have the resources to be able to accommodate that. That would be wonderful, be great frankly, to be able to offer, you know, two different ones, maybe one on a weekend, one on a weeknight, because again, just to accommodate different people's schedules, but that'll, could come in the future.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, Council? Yes, Solomon Walker?
Hey, man, I just want to say thank you. You know, it takes a lot to rebuild a town, you know, when you've been through so much, especially in that neighborhood, and it takes a lot of good, solid people like you guys have brought here to do that because nobody pays you for this. So I just want to say, you know, just thank you, because that area needs it, and some of those people, you know, who don't have the kind of funding background, you know, need that as well. So that's huge, man, and I appreciate you guys doing that. Please let all your board know, I really appreciate that.
Thank you, very much appreciate that, Alderman Walker.
Alderman Powell?
I just want to say the same thing as entrepreneur. Thanks for your efforts, and more programs like this is needed to support self-sufficient individuals, and I think it's a great program.
Thank you very much, Alderman Powell.
Any others? Hearing none. Well, it's a consideration, so.
So it's consideration, but it looks like there's a consensus. This is a good thing to do. And what we'll do is we'll put it into the budget and identify it as part of the community development budget. We'll be the bursar, if you will, working with the community foundation, and Chad, of course, will let us know and give us the necessary information to inch this out until it's all spent.
Wonderful. Thanks, Chad. Thanks, Dan. Hearing that, we're good. You don't have to stay as well? I know both of you are extremely busy individuals, and I know Donita is even busier, so let's, you guys can go ahead and take off at this point if you so choose, or you can stick around and listen to water mains and things like that. So thanks again for all you guys do.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item J, Resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2024-096, approving a transit shelter advertising agreement with View Transit LLC. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Perkins, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So the ask behind this is to extend our current agreement with View Transit for another 10 years. And the background lays out some data showing what the relationship has generated for us in terms of income, but also it, I hope, and we can, Mike Nguyen Kirchen is here, our transit manager, can answer any specific questions on the quality, but one of the points I was trying to make is that in addition to a little bit of money that we get for this as a franchise fee, we've also had a very good experience with them. The bus shelters, like almost any structure, are subject to vandalism, graffiti, things like that, and they've always been very aware that we're proud of our bus system, we're proud of the appearance of such service-oriented enclosures, and they've been right there when we need it, and it doesn't happen that often, but it will happen from time to time. And that's what I've seen, and Mike deals with them more, on a more regular basis and trying to, also, they work with us as we try to identify other areas where we might need to expand or pull back on a particular stop. So I recommend this, and I know their transit manager does too.
Council, questions? Alderman Zazada?
You know, I know that you and I, City Manager, discussed years ago the matter of some of our bus stops not having bus shelters. And I can't remember, you had a really good explanation for that, but I'm wondering, how do we expand these services so that we don't have people just standing in random spots?
So I don't think they do. I don't remember what kind of great answer I gave you, but I bet it came from Mike Nguyen Kirchen. So Mike, would you like to take the podium there?
Yeah, I feel like there was some legality.
Are we lacking in shelters now?
I remember this, and I think, Mike, you were the one that told us how many bus stops we actually have?
Yeah, so we actually have, believe it or not, there's about 250 bus stops throughout the community. The way that the system was developed, we're, if you think about it, we're only about five years old. The system was developed out of taking a community-based program that VAC was running and was running more as a door-to-door type service and then the NIU service. It wasn't really well capitalized, so there wasn't a lot of bus shelters that were put up at the time. Right now, we've got about 30 throughout the community. About 20 of those fall under the city. The rest of them are, you know, a combination of NIU and other privately-owned, like suburban apartments, this sort of thing. Anyway, long story short, is we are identifying funding sources and locations. Next year, we want to do four or five. Believe it or not, because the funding source we're looking at would be federal in a lot of cases, there's, you have to do an environmental review of that little plot of land that you're going to be putting a shelter on. Then the other element is that each one of those shelters costs about $60,000 to put up between engineering and costs and building.
Wow.
It's one of those things, if we were to put up 250 bus shelters throughout the community, it would cost us about, you know, somewhere between 12 to 14 million dollars. So we have to do it a little bit at a time, but we're targeting four or five for next year. A good example is that our target stop, Hy-Vee, those are spots in the community that definitely need shelters. There's shelters throughout the community that we, you know, ideally, we would love to see another 20 or 30 go up over the next couple of years, and that will go a long way towards addressing a lot of those high-volume sort of spots. You're not going to have, you may not have shelters at every location throughout the community, but we will get a lot further, I'm sorry.
So I'm remembering now what the issue was, that I think we discussed maybe service organizations offering benches or something of the like, and I believe what the issue was, was that maybe it was in conflict with the agreement. And so what I'm kind of getting at is while we're renegotiating this agreement, it would be a great time to add a stipulation where service organizations could put out a bench, because maybe every spot doesn't necessarily need a whole shelter, but at least having a bench might be something better, so people aren't just standing.
I, you know, I'm not an attorney, but I don't see that necessarily conflicting with this agreement. The challenge will be, once you put something up, then you also have to address ADA. So in other words, putting down a, like a bench or something like that at an existing stop, once you're, you know, doing an improvement to it, then we have to start looking at maybe there's some ADA elements and that sort of thing. So like I said, this community wasn't really built, we kind of put transit on top of it, and there wasn't like, you know, in the beginning, it just, you know, there wasn't an infrastructure built for it, so we're trying to go through and develop that, but there's definitely a need.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, and I just want to emphasize that I feel like it's really important. I feel like every time I drive by and see people standing on the side of the road somewhere where I'm like, what are they doing there?
Believe me, believe me, when we're out, you know, when I'm out, you know, like in the winter and, you know, like you got to shovel out some of those spots, and believe me, I feel for those people, I really do, and it's something we would love to see happen a lot more.
Okay, yeah, so if there's any way to get, allow service organizations to do things like this, just put up benches, it would be lovely to try to sort out.
Any other comments or questions, Council? Hearing none, roll call please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I?
Resolution 2024-096 passes. Thanks, Mike. Moving on to number two, Resolution 2024-097, authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and approving a contract with Fur Powell Construction USA LLC in the amount of $288,780 for water main lining of approximately 340 feet of 16-inch main located under the right-of-way of Interstate I-88. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Powell, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The highlights in the background, I'll tell the deeper story, I'll just summarize.
It's pretty amazing tech, yeah. It's amazing tech, technology.
So the, back in, a couple months ago now, the city learned of some very serious water loss. We weren't sure where it was, but it was about 80,000 gallons a day, which was a major loss, and you would assume you see an eruption somewhere, guys or somewhere, but none of that was possible. We finally found out where it was, and it was in about a 50-year-old main extension that went from the north side of I-88 to the south side, and that's been very instrumental in a lot of ways. Initially, the purpose was to provide fresh water, potable water for the tollway oasis, but also as a future for what might happen on the southern side of I-88. And of course, 20 years went by and there wasn't much happening, but all of a sudden it is. There's one other way that you can get in with water, and it's a major way, and it comes overland basically west of South Fourth Street, and we, as you know, we have an elevated storage tank there and a well, and then that comes down west and then goes east along Gerler. Well, this main break disguises it was because the 16-inch main extension was in a concrete pipe casing, and it wasn't poured concrete like a cube, like you sometimes see in bigger projects, but it was just a lot of storm pipe, basically tarred together. So over time, moisture got in, and it was an iron pipe, as pipe generally was in the day, and probably a small hole on the top of the ductile iron became larger and larger, and pretty soon it cracked, and that led to the major failure. So happily, when we found, it took, we had to bring in a company that has special sounding equipment, we found that it was out of the heart of the right-of-way, which would be the paved areas of the tollway, east and west. It was in the south ditch line, and with the help of a local contractor, our water division was able to make the repair. As we stripped back the concrete pipe, first of all, and then saw about 16 feet or so of the main, we found and replaced the section that it cracked and was, had failed. But we could also see the condition of the pipe wasn't any better north and south of that particular area. Would have been nice if it was just a bad section of pipe. That leads us to believe that we were lucky this time, and if it were to erupt in the middle of the toll road, it would almost certainly happen in inclement weather and at the wrong time, a holiday or something like that. We're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars just for the repair, and then we have the same problem. It happens that there is a middle point between doing nothing and then having to push a brand-new 16-inch line with some other kind of casing underneath the toll road, which would cost in excess of anywhere from $1 million to $1.5 million. And it's a lining process which is available to us now, wasn't 20 years ago. And there's a company that we consulted, we called around, talked to a number of companies, but one company seems to have the most experience and expertise and has also worked in northern Illinois, and we asked them for an estimate. The estimate is $288,780. That includes not only the lining of the pipe, which you force in a liner, and then by a process I'm not expert in, having never done it, but the outer wall of this liner adheres to the inner wall of the pipe, and then the pipe is still inside the concrete casing, so you still have protection. In some respects, it's better than what we found when we found the leak. And so Brian Faber and I and others have consulted about this. We feel the best way to go is to go with the lining, and you know, the price, the price also includes some preparatory work. Obviously, we have to shut off the main and far enough to the north so that where it flows in, so that we can insert the liner, disconnect basically, insert the liner, and then reconnect after it's adhered. And on the south side, there has to be a positive stop there without eliminating the water supply to the oasis. So it's a little complicated, but that's included in the price.
Council, questions? Alderman Perkins?
I'm doing my best to get my creative juices flowing here, but when I hear.
I'll get you out there for it.
When I hear liner, in my mind's eye, and I'm sure this isn't it, but I'm visualizing like a pool liner that you're putting in the pipe. Can you tell me a little bit more about the liner? It has to be more than a pool liner.
It is, it is, and it's a process, so there's obviously something like a big brush that manages to press it ahead, and of course, they can see what's happening with some small lights and cameras, and it rolls out as smooth, you know. I'm trying to think of an example that maybe is more familiar to us.
Like a boring brush on a gun.
Yeah, maybe that's it, yep, yep. But it's handled and it's operated in such a way that you stop if you see that there's a problem, and you back up and then you proceed forward. And we've got a fair distance to go there, so obviously, we're using cameras and underground equipment to show what's going on. This has a, and I said the outside, I didn't mean to confuse you, but, so the inside is where the brush is, and it can't have the adhesive part there, and plus, you want the outside of it to adhere to the inside of the ductile iron, and that's what's happening. And how long it has to sit, it takes about two weeks for this process, and it's not shoving it through for two weeks, it's basically letting the adhesive adhere. And even if that failed, you're better off than you are now, unless somehow or other it diminished the flow of water, and we can find that out within the day, we would know that's the case.
Any idea how thick the liner is?
I don't. I'm going to wager it's thinner than you would imagine in order to make sure that it doesn't resist the running in, if you will. So, but I'm sorry, Brian couldn't be here tonight, but.
I'm just kind of curious.
That's the extent, I asked some of the same questions, that's what I got, and if you ask me any more questions, I can't answer.
It's actually fascinating, if you go to the website, they have a ton of videos showing the process itself, but yeah, it does cure in place, but they're saying, the testing that they've done, it would have survived San Francisco's earthquake. So the curing process that happens must harden enough, but still have some flexibility, essentially, but they've done, it looked like, if I remember right, runs that went miles on it. So it's pretty tested, and they're a Canadian and a US headquartered company that do this all over the place. You got to watch the videos, it's actually really cool to see how they do it, yeah.
I'm going to go back and have a look at it, because I'm just kind of curious about it, it's pretty cool stuff.
And if I may, in probably a month, maybe two meetings from now, I'll be bringing back a, the first recommendation we'll have from the water system modeling that's been going on with Baxter and Woodman for the last nine months or so. And because of this, we can probably go forward with a couple of other things. If we had to push this, then it would diminish our capacity to fund some other things that are obviously future-centered.
You know what would be really cool? If, when they're putting it in, we're notified, maybe a council member or two would like to go and see it. I'd love to check it out.
Me too.
We'll have to publish it as a meeting.
Let me tell you, it's not like you go just out on the sidewalk, so you got to.
I know, I'd always be on 88, and it might be problematic, yeah, yeah. Alderman Zazada?
I'm curious, did they scope the whole thing already to make sure that there won't be any blockages? Is there any chance that this won't work in the end?
Almost certainly no blockage in there now.
Because water's flowing out. Because water's flowing out.
Right now.
Like, I mean, like a root going straight through, or?
Well, the root doesn't, just because this concrete block, or excuse me, not block, but concrete pipe is two and a half to three inches thick. And it's, it's very resilient. The problem was the pipe inside, there, there's just enough humidity and so forth over a lot of years, and changes in temperature and all the rest. And it was deep enough, but as it came out, where it broke, it, it was probably more shallow than other places because there was a ditch that comes down, and that brings the outside temperature closer to that. It's still plenty deep, but I think that had a factor in it.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight-I?
Resolution 2024-097 passes. Number three, Resolution 2024-098, authorizing the purchase of a replacement Phoenix G2 ATX station controller from US Digital Designs in an amount not to exceed $21,194.25 using the liability and property claims fund. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Larson, City Manager.
So cleanliness is next to guile-ness, some people say. Sometimes, in, in efforts to keep the apparatus bay in Station One clean, we, we really, it's every day, every morning, the shift shows up, and as soon as the day is sort of accounted for, they will wash down the apparatus bay. And where the, the first-floor masonry walls hit the masonry floor, there's always going to be some cracking, and you see it in your houses. It happens in commercial buildings, too. We've had that clocked and, and the seams filled many times. But wouldn't you know, there was a gap that you wouldn't see, it wouldn't immediately come to the eye. Inch-and-a-half hose running a lot of water past that, and it starts trickling down into the basement. And where did it find its, its target? It was, it was the, the new system that we use for the call-outs that, that obviously are so critical to, to the operation of the station. So, we have a claim in, we're gonna pay, we have a pay, we're gonna pay for it out of our liability and property claims fund, I should say. The cost, I wish I could say it was a few bucks, but it's $21,000. We can't live with what we have now. We've been able to rig together the old system for, for the time being. We can't hold, it wasn't negligence of, of any major order, it was, it was an accident. So, we need your support so we can proceed to get it replaced.
Counsel, questions, comments on this item? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight-I?
Resolution 2024-098 passes. Moving on to agenda item K, ordinances, second reading. Number one, ordinance 2024-044, amending Chapter 38, intoxicating liquors, Section 38.07, classifications of liquor licenses by adding a cosmetic liquor license. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Sisada, seconded by Alderman Larson. Before I turn over to your City Manager, I really thought this was gonna be a non-event, and I got no dog in this hunt. What I have is, as the Liquor Commissioner, people talk to me all the time about various nuances in our liquor code. Can we do this? Can we do that? Why can't we do this? Why can't we do that? And I hear about it all the time. In this case, people also talk to Recording Secretary Scott, because she's the one that processes all the liquor licenses and dots her i's and crosses her t's. And we've had multiple salons that have reached out to Ruth, who has talked to me. I've heard from multiple salons that have talked to me directly on this one. And ultimately, all's what I was looking at is, we've got some entrepreneurs out there that were asking, as we know, the last meeting, the woman that said she's just trying to enhance the client experience. We got another one that said, with that said, we do offer a very small complimentary coffe and soda bar. A few clients have been asking about low ABV beverages, and if there could be a way I could offer those as part of our service. This is just, right now, there's not an option for our salons and barber shops to offer low alcohol-by-volume drinks if they want to. And it's something their clients are asking for, and since there's no legal way to do it, I thought, why not modify our code, have a fee? I think it's a $250 fee, if I remember right, that we're asking. But what's also important is, all these locations have to have DRAM insurance, which is an additional cost to them, and they have to go through Basset training for anyone that serves alcohol in their establishments. So if you're gonna offer low alcohol-by-volume drinks, it's a financial investment that each salon or barber shop would have to actually make, and it's up to them to decide if that's something they want to do or not. So, I was just bringing this forward. They're asking, seemed like a reasonable thing, and that's been the root of it. So there have been, despite what people think, if they can't FOIA something and get an answer, that I'm lying. There have been plenty of people that have asked about this, and it was pretty innocuous. So, with that, City Manager.
I have nothing to add. This was taken up, as you know, on September 9th, and was considered on first reading, comes to you on second reading.
Counsel, questions or comments? Alderman Larson.
I too just talk to anybody that'll talk back at me. And I, I was, you know, standing in line here, there, whatever, and so I asked, will you get your hair done around here? And, and I'm not sure exactly where it is around here, but several salons offer it already, and so I didn't wanna go into exactly where. But, but a woman's maintaining natural beauty can take several hours. And to have maybe a glass of wine in that time, I think, would be lovely. So, I'm okay. And usually, if somebody's in there for two hours, they're not there for two hours with their kids, it's usually more of an adult situation. So...
Any other comments, questions? Alderman Walker.
You know, I, I honestly get what you guys are saying with the, the female experience. My wife likes that as well. But this is my issue with it. And, see, we have barber shops around here, you know. We have some good ones that Alderman Powell has, but then we have some other ones that are a little bit sketchy sometimes. And there's no way we can define who can get these licenses. So I guess, my standpoint on how I look at things is, I go to a barber shop where they're all rowdy 21 to 26-year-old young men. But they're also there with their, you know, their moms or their grandmothers. And, you know, there's music going, there's a lot of talking going, and, you know, I just believe, you know, two or three beers, you know, for, you know, some people could lead to, you know, a fight turning, you know, a little bit worse than we could imagine. So I get, you know, the nail salons, the beauticians and all that. But then again, you kind of just made me think about something. And I'm not a police officer, so I would have to ask Chief Bird if I could. But Chief, I'm sure you've been on a lot of DUI pull stops, right? So, I mean, just because a man, a person, you know, has a glass or two of wine, and I'm sure you've pulled over many, and they were like, I'm not drunk, but then you do the breathalyzer, then you find out they're blowing over the legal, you know, limit. I'm just saying, you know, those things can occur. And I just think with passing this, it just gives that, you know, kind of dilemma that they can put themselves in, you know. And, you know, I, I wanna help every business, you know, have the best experience they can, you know, whatever the case may be. But I'm just not looking at, you know, the sophisticated salons, you know, the sophisticated barber shops. I'm looking at, you know, every other barber shop that I've heard, you know, issues going on. So that's, you know, my reasoning for, you know, being a hard no, and I'm still staying there.
The nice thing, so everyone's aware, as Liquor Commissioner too, if, in the, if, if I feel something is transpiring that jeopardizes public safety, the chief can literally pick me up in my house, will have a notice written, and I've had these written for other businesses, drive to their shop, post it, and their liquor license is gone for seven days. And then we can aggressively go after a permanent revocation of the liquor license, too. So Alderman Walker, yeah, if this, if this goes through and there's a situation like that that you're seeing, holler at me.
Yes, sir.
Because I have no problem bringing people to City Hall, and I've done it multiple times, for, for alcohol-related issues that needed to be addressed. And I don't tolerate any BS when it comes to that.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Larson.
I'm not sure if it was in, in this or in our background, but I thought that there was some kind of limitation, like, I couldn't come with a group of friends who's once getting their hair done, let's say it was of the younger ages, and then the rest of us could be sitting there having a drink with them. I thought it was strictly for people who were like in the chair getting their hair done. So like, for, even for your young man, it's like you could, I mean, how long does it take to do your hair? I don't know.
Well, you know, I'm handsome, so it takes a little time.
I, I, that's why I was asking for a few of them.
You don't want, you don't want anything missed.
Nothing, nothing.
So I, I guess, you know, that would also limit it to that. You could only be drinking while you're the customer. And, and if it's, happens quickly, you could have maybe one?
Yeah. Hey, yeah, I, I like that, but it's like, people are not supposed to, you know, drink and drive, and they do.
Sure.
So, I mean, that's it.
City Manager?
But just as it does say in the ordinance, Alderman Larson is right, that the wording is, customers and patrons shall not be served alcoholic beverages unless they are receiving contemporaneous personal beauty cosmetic services, which would include haircuts from the license holder.
Okay. Alderman Sisada?
Yeah, you know, I, I didn't know the background of exactly how you get a liquor license, but I'm Googling it right now. And it looks like, before you can even go into the Basset training, you need to provide a certificate of insurance. So I just wanna note that, you know, if you've, as Alderman Walker said, if you've got sketchy barber shops out there, you know, let's let businesses decide what services fit their business model and go from there. Because it might not make financial sense for those types of businesses to do it when they've got people coming in and out in 20 minutes, right?
And also, and also just, we're not the only ones to do this. Deerfield, Oak Brook, Arlington Heights, Glenview, I'll just name a few in our, our area that offer cosmetic beauty salon liquor licenses. Anything else on this topic?
All right. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Walker?
No.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Upstate.
Verbic?
No.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Five-I?
Ordinance 2024-044 has been passed on second reading. I also feel obligated, you know, timing can be a real pain sometimes, and I never considered in a second that appointing Alderman Powell to this council and bringing this forward would be a connection to be made. And I know he has been vilified repeatedly online for this, for no reason whatsoever. So Alderman Powell, I'll just apologize for the many people that I've talked to that, I'm sorry you had to go through this. I'm sorry during the process you couldn't even comment on it to defend yourself, but it was unreasonable, it was unwarranted. And I think there's a lot of people out there that should be ashamed of themselves for how they addressed this issue and how they dragged you into it.
Agreed.
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
In-N-Out cuts absolutely will not be applying for this license. You know, I don't like that that narrative was put on me and pushed behind me. And if I had to be honest, I called the mayor and I asked him, when I seen on agenda, hey, I have a salon open in a few days, this is gonna look like this is for me. Can you remove this off the agenda? And he said, no. Why would I do that? And I said, well, you know, people are gonna say that it looks like it's me and my salon that's open. My salon opened two days after that. And he said, hey, we can't make decisions based off social media and what people are saying. I can't pull an agenda item for that. And it's just, it was a slap in the face for people to say that, that I moved to DeKalb for that purpose. I didn't move to DeKalb for that purpose. Look at my location where I'm located versus where I was, hidden in the Back Plaza on Bethany. But I just didn't appreciate that, and it's also a slap in the face of the guys that worked for me that, uh, worked hard for years and years to come to get to that point, and to be able to move to the location we're in and have the girlfriend that we're in, and take that away from them, to say it was all based on a liquor license. It's just unappreciated, and that's not the goal. If I wanted to start a business with a liquor license, it would be something different. It doesn't fit what I have going at In-N-Out. And second, I do represent the fifth ward that hosts many salons and barber shops. And what people gotta remember is, I have obligation to advocate for those salons and those barber shops. So if they wanted it and I asked for it, they're gonna say it's me. If they wanted it and I said no, they're gonna say I'm trying to limit my competition because I'm in the same field. It's a lose-lose situation for me. I just wanna say, I don't even want that license. I'm good. That's all.
All right. Moving on to agenda item L, ordinances first reading. Number one, ordinance 2024-045, approving the rezoning of property located at 2100 Pleasant Street, southeast corner of Pleasant Street and Peace Road, from the HI Heavy Industrial District to the GC General Commercial District, City of DeKalb. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic, City Manager.
Thank you, Manager. Thank you, Mayor. I'm the manager, you're the mayor. This, this is a rezoning of, of city-owned property. It's right at the southeast corner of Pleasant and Peace Road. This has been a city property since the 40s. It's, it's a, a remnant, really, of the original location of the first hangar, and then also the first administrative building for the operation of the airport. So, airport advisory boards for decades have been talking about what should be done on this corner. And if you go back through the archives, you can find a couple of plans and plaits that would show some ideas. The current airport advisory board has recommended that we take the first step toward the rezoning of the property for some commercial activity. Currently, it's zoned for industrial, heavy industrial, in fact, which is not appropriate there anyway, although it is consistent with the zoning across the street to the west and also to the northwest, where there's obviously some industrial activity plus a, a commed substation. But commercial does align with the northeast corner of Pleasant and Peace, the, the one-story row of, of many different smaller commercial businesses. And so, we need a couple of things, and ultimately, we'll bring some plans to you to look at and consider, whether it's the best use of this three-acre parcel, a couple of different commercial uses would find room to go there. And, you know, mostly people who think about it say, well, it'd be great to have a restaurant there. And some say, it'd be great to have a, a gas station there. Well, they're, these are not bad ideas, but they're ideas, just ideas at this point. And we will, we will go through all of these and others and, and bring something back to you in, in due course. It, it should not be lost on us that the construction of a business-class hotel just up the road on the east same side of Peace Road should also be an impetus for the use of this commercial area. In addition to the traffic, it's a heavily trafficked route. And, as you know, we have flyers that come into the airport, and they're looking for a restaurant of some kind, and they have to get in a loaner car and go find it. And we don't send somebody with them to, to be the tour guide. So, I think this, this has a lot of potential, and we recommend your approval.
Rochelle has a great restaurant at the airport. You can watch the skydivers come down, and it's pretty cool. Any comments or questions? Counsel. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight-I?
Ordinance 2024-045 passes on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Powell. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight-I?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2024-045. Moving on to number two, ordinance 2024-046, amending Chapter 23, Unified Development Ordinance, ordinance as it pertains to miscellaneous text amendments, City of DeKalb. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Powell, seconded by Alderman Verbic, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. There's some extensive ban- There's some extensive background here. I want to thank our director of planning, Dan Olson, who's in the audience tonight, can help me if I falter here in explaining what this is all about. So we've been collecting a list. The list has grown gradually since 2022 when we redid our comprehensive plan. For the most part, these items come out either of discussions around that time or subsequent to that time in discussions before the council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. And many of them are rather minute, but need to be cleaned up in the code. Others are business friendly and are designed to help speed things along when it's appropriate. And the first one out of the box is, in my background anyway, is Article 5 change. You've had a number, a handful at least, of persons who have had a single-family building that they'd like, or excuse me, they've had, say, two attached townhouses, but they've been part of a common ownership, and they'd like to be able to sell them in fee simple and using the common wall, which is usually a parapet wall, for the boundary line. And that has always required a special use permit. It's also required in, as a matter of state law, to have a plat so that the parcels can be vended or can be sold at a closing. And we can deal with one half of that at least, to reduce the cost of the review by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the special use permit. But we can't do a wave of the final plat requirement, which is something, as I mentioned, in state statute. So we've tried to minimize that experience, especially since once it's been reviewed and the building code offices have looked at it, there isn't too much to discuss and to have people go to several meetings and come in here, that's a different thing. Some other things that are in here, one obvious one is that the bigger buildings, the 500,000 square foot and larger buildings that are being built in our south industrial park want signage, and if they go by our current sign code, you get a little sign, looks like a postage stamp on the corner. We went through this with those buildings that have been there. Variances or special considerations have been written into development agreements to deal with the fact that we didn't have a code that addressed the scale and the appropriate scale of signage. And so we are taking some steps to expand the allowable square footage of these wall signs that would greet the public without appearing garish or creating any sign blight in our really premier business park. There are other things here. I'd be happy to answer any questions rather than walk you through all of the detail. And Dan Olson would help as well.
Council, any questions or comments on this? Yes, Alderman Perkins.
I do have a question on that, on that common or that common wall item specifically. So we had one that came before us. And I've got family that live over in Aurora, and I talked, and I spoke to it at that time. And if you think about a duplex, what's happened over there in their neighborhood is one side is owned by one person, other side is owned by someone else. One side sides their house dark blue. The other one sides their piece of the duplex white. Same thing with the roof. Roof could be dark on one side and white on the other. It has a horrible look. So by changing this, as it exists now, we have an opportunity to provide some guidance for consistency for how it looks in the neighborhood. What will that control mechanism be going forward?
That's a very good question. I know we've talked about this, and you've raised that in our special use permits more recently. We have put in some language having to do with compatibility and so forth. Let me ask our city attorney, do we still have that ability just for the plaits or not?
Yeah, well, we would, I mean, the best thing to do would probably be to have another text amendment for these types of duplexes that would require like an aesthetic code or something along those lines, the same colors. Yeah, I don't think the plating in itself would, yeah.
I'd be open to that.
But I'd just like to see some control mechanism. I know it's really down in the minutia. But I'm telling you, driving around his neighborhood, every time I see that, I'm like, oh, my gosh. I can't imagine being a neighbor, you know.
So I'll just offer an immediate reaction. I would rather than we go back to what we had for the reason that if, for instance, at the staff level, we were to try to, if that would be one path to go, if we get a request like this and it's, and you've changed the code so it's just a plat that's required by the council, but you're still hoping for some supervision of what might happen. The staff, I'll tell you, we'd be reluctant to say you can have round, which you can have. You know, I'd really rather the people who make the policy make that decision. And we want to back up to something, if you will. Just my opinion from the staff level. And I, that's the one thing, I don't know if that came up, Dan, in the conversation with the Planning and Zoning Commission, but now that you mention it, I remember that point well. And I don't know how we'd cover without just leaving it the way it is.
Right. I'm open to, I'm open to different things. But I think we need to have some mechanism to, whether it's, as a council or as a department and the city.
I think we dealt with that in the special use product that was approved. We still have seven conditions in the ordinance, like you have to have separate utilities for each unit. There's a minimum lot area and setbacks. I don't know if we could add another condition about the colors of the two units being consistent or not, but special use was a mechanism that we addressed that issue with the one we had last year, I believe, or when that came up.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is if we eliminate that hurdle, if it's no longer a hurdle, then we no longer have a means of assuring that there's a common look and feel.
Yeah, unless we could add it as additional condition. We can maybe as a condition, except the conditions are primarily circumstanced circumstances relating to the request. In this case, it's taste, right? I mean, one is a water pipe in the ground, well, yeah, you want it there, but this is different.
And for example, we have design requirements for newer construction in older buildings. It would just be something similar, a design aesthetic requirements for these types of duplexes.
But now we are having a jury over a color palette. If two entities are arguing over it, and someone's going to have to make a decision on that color palette, and then that may result in one doesn't want to do it at all. So now you got a house that's not getting painted or re-ruffed that needs to get painted or re-ruffed. Alderman Larson?
Well, and that also then brings up the thing, my roof failed. Well, my roof didn't. I've got the money or the insurance money to fix mine. I can't afford to fix mine. And so I can't afford to paint, even though you want to change your color. It could put financial hardship on one half of the duplex. They don't have the money to paint for the roof to match.
I mean, I agree with what you're saying. I just don't know how.
Right, right.
Yeah. I don't know how we would really be able to manage that well.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Alderman Verbic. So this may have come up before previously as well. People each by their side of the townhome or duplex, right? One of them decides to allow it as a rental property. So they move out and they decide they're going to have it as a rental property. Is that whole arrangement on the owners? How does, the city is not involved in that, correct?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, yeah. When it works, well, it works. And when it doesn't work, well, it doesn't work, so.
And those are the ones I'm concerned about.
Yeah. But yeah, so that's no answer. I realize that. But a lot of communities do just what we proposed to you tonight. And I don't know what the failsafe is there. What's the trigger to get, you know, recompense if it's not done well?
Could staff spend just a little time, or maybe it's our city attorney, just looking at other communities that might already have an ordinance written for something like this or a specification?
Could it fall under our aesthetic policy, as you already mentioned, city attorney? Like, because I know that the aesthetic policy says that things should be of like style, but, and that's still pretty subjective.
It is, and we have in our comprehensive, we spent a little time in the comprehensive plan adding those standards. But it wasn't specific just to duplexes or attached townhouses. And then the arbiter of that, it was never, what's the enforcement arm? That's not real clear.
Alderman's is on.
I feel like I was the one who insisted that it would be really good for us to do this because I know we've had a handful come through, and it feels like we're making extra red tape. And from the perspective, from the real estate perspective, it's really valuable to do this, to subdivide them and to make it a more streamlined process because it allows more people access to homeownership. So because of that, doing this is a very positive step, and that's why I'm so strongly in favor for it. But I also have a high value for aesthetic as well, so that's why. But I think that the greater good here is going with it and making it happen so that more people can buy their own homes.
Alderman Larson?
Okay, so let's go back to the ones we voted for. Then we said, let's do it. They could stand up with two different color roofs and different colored windows and two different color paints that clash, even if we keep it the same as it is now. Because we voted to allow these people to do it. So what?
I have a solution. I think the mayor suggested it.
Would love to hear it.
All these points are valid, every one of them.
Yes, 100%.
I would say, I recommend that we consider everything but this revisioned Article 5. We'll bring back something to you. And I guess if we either don't do anything or we do take some time, spell out some language that's not too constrictive, but in a general way, not unlike our design, what do we call them, design standards? Is that what we call them? That gives some general guidelines. Else, we have nothing to back up to when we're enforcing this. You know, somebody comes in and says, did you see what they did with that roof? They're putting on a yellow roof and I, you know. So we couldn't stop them, we couldn't, you know, whatever. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Give us about 30 days.
Yeah, that's my big thing, is just to, whatever we're going to do, just be thoughtful of. I understand and support the thought of making homeownership more available to people. I get it. But I think I'd just like to see some recourse to have the neighbors play nice together and come up with a solution that works for the neighborhood, you know.
I realize wherever there isn't an HOA, my neighbor could paint their house some crazy color. That's not acceptable to this neighbor.
There was just that round from the 70s.
Roper round.
Yeah, the roper round. Things could get really colorful.
All right, so from a parliamentary perspective, how do I, do I need another? We've got a motion to discuss the ordinance as it is. So, city attorney?
Yeah, I don't know if we wanted to continue it, or did we want to pass it on first reading and then we'll come back on second reading with some of these suggestions? Or we could just do an amendment? These are all.
My suggestion would be, if you like the other pieces to it, let's remove section, the revisions to section five.
I'm asking, how do I do that?
Yeah, you ask a motion to amend.
Motion to amend. Which takes precedence, and you vote on that, and then you come back to the main question.
All right.
So I'm motion to amend and strike that clause from tonight's.
The common wall.
Agenda item, the common wall item, yes.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
So moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Sazada. Roll call on that, please.
Question.
Whoa, question, sorry.
Clarify then that that is a motion to remove Article 5 from ordinance 2024-046. Is that correct?
There are a few other things in Article 5 not related to the common wall, so I think it should be.
So we just want to remove the common wall? That was the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on that? If not, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight eye?
So, looking really quick, so ordinance 2024-046 passes with the amendment to the ordinance that we just passed.
I think the amendment was passed.
Oh, the amendment passed. There we go. All right, thank you. All right, so the amendment to ordinance 2024-046 on removing the common wall component to it passed. Now I would, is there any comments or questions on passing ordinance 2024-046 as amended? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight eye?
Ordinance 2024-046 then has passed. I would take a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Second.
So second reading, a motion has been moved by Alderman Sazada, seconded by Alderman Larson. Any questions or comments on that? All right, roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight eye?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2024-046. All right, moving on to agenda item M, reports and communications, council member reports. Alderman Sazada, you want to kick us off?
No report.
Alderman Smith?
I will say this, yeah, I agree with the mayor about the comments, especially against Alderman Powell. And I am sorry that happened to you, sir. I see your business, I drive by it every day. I know I promised to be in there, but you look rather busy, so again, my apologies.
Alderman Powell?
I attended the IML conference, took a lot of sessions, got some good education. It was a good experience.
Alderman Walker?
No report.
Alderman Verbic?
Word six is celebrating barbed wire weekend at the Glidden Homestead. Looking forward to it.
Alderman Perkins?
No report.
Alderman Larson?
No report.
For me, really quick, went to the Daha dedication. It was actually really cool, and I know the Larsons were a huge supporter of the dedication itself. But Daha is.
The DeKalb.
Area Agricultural Heritage Association.
Heritage Association, thank you. And what it was, was a dedication to some really industrious farmers many years ago that figured out a way how to determine the yield per acre, or the yield, actually, probably by the foot, of a field. So that allowed them to understand what more they might need to add or what more they might need to do. But when you think about the impact of that, that impact changed literally the way the world is fed. And it was just really cool to have people like Steve Faber and. Dave Larson, just honored by having a plaque from Daha on their property, which was really cool. Good moment, and well-attended dedication, too. Also, want to thank Chief Thomas on the fire department. Every 9/11 does Patriots Day, just ceremony. It's a great way to start the day. It's somber, but it's just a way of recognizing all the first responders that, you know, went into the building charging when the Twin Towers were attacked. And I just really appreciate our local fire department taking a moment, which I know happens nationally, and being part of that recognition for all those first responders out there that lost their lives that day. Also, I went on Vax Meals on Wheels. Highly recommend. It is one of the coolest experiences in the world. I think everyone here should, if you can, carve out a little time over lunch. They make it super easy for you to be able to do that. And it's just a great organization as well. Echoing Alderman Powell, went to the IML, that's the Illinois Municipal League. If you all remember, that's the largest lobbying organization in the state of Illinois for all 1,294 municipalities. They had their annual conference. I think we were there for two and a half days, lots of great sessions, lots of great ideas that came out of it that I'm looking forward to discussing with a lot of you in our one-on-ones. But we'll be moving forward on, I think, some initiatives that really could make a significant impact in our community. Also, did the AFSP Walk, that's a walk to bring recognition to just the suicide rate that is out there. And that is a walk that is sponsored, I shouldn't say sponsored. Current construction dedicates a lot of time and money making sure that walk happens, and it was incredibly well-attended, which was just great. Also, the last two things, I was able to go to NIU's football game and share a moment with James Lehan, 96-year-old World War II veteran, recognized on the field to a sold-out crowd. It was a tearjerker. It was just amazing to be a part of that. But I also have to give Northern Illinois University a lot of credit for recognizing so many veterans that day. And then also, there was a swearing-in of a whole next generation of recruits. was a swearing in of a whole next generation of recruits and they raised their right hand and swore to defend the Constitution against all enemies foreign and domestic. And it was just really cool to see these young guys, it was only guys that raised their right hand and they're now going off to their career in the military. And then the last thing, Sunday was the Be the One Walk. Be the One is, the American Legion is a driver of this and it's again bringing recognition to the suicide rate that's out there and for veterans, eighteen to twenty-two veterans per day take their own life. So you think about that, that's a staggering number and it just shows how many people when they left the battlefield, the battlefield didn't leave them and it carries with them. And many of us have had friends or families that have succumbed to the experiences that they've had. So it was their first year doing it, I bet there was a hundred-plus people there. It was really a moving day. So next year, just keep on your radar, Be the One, it's a great walk to be a part of and to help us and, or at least reduce veteran suicide. That's all I got, city manager?
Just like to claim a point of personal privilege to introduce my oldest and best friend, my twin brother, Robert Wayne Nicholas, in the back.
Bob, who has loved sitting through all my discussions. Thanks for coming up, Bob. With that, we'll move on to executive session. Give me one second here. So I need a motion for approval to hold an executive session in order to discuss, one, workers' compensation as provided for in five ILCS one twenty slash two C twelve, and also, two, collective bargaining as provided for in five ILCS one twenty slash two C two.
So moved.
Sorry. Moved by Alderwoman Sazada, seconded by Alderman Powell. Roll call please.